I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everyone. I'd consider a motion to approve the agenda. Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Commissioner Gibbon. Sean, will you call the roll?
Chairman, Chair, who was the first on that? Who made the?
Commissioner Ehrens.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Consider our motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Move on to our opportunity for public comment. Anyone in the audience that wishes to come up and address the board, you can come on up. You only have five minutes. Just first, please state your name and address.
Morning, Jessica Palamont, TCU, South Dakota. And I just wanted to thank those on the commission and Ms. Lund for coming to our election integrity presentation a couple of weeks ago. Thank you for coming, and I thank you for the comments on the drop boxes and the machines. However, I believe moving the drop box in the building is an admission that there is a risk with using the drop box, and I'd just like to see it go away. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Scott Montgomery, 320 Elm Street, Fairview, South Dakota. First off, I'd like to thank those of you who took time out of your busy schedule to attend the presentation on election integrity. The evidence provided shows that integrity of our elections is in question. In South Dakota, we have two ways to vote, in person and absentee, with the absentee ballot being returned by the U.S. Postal Service. Do you believe that the ability of the postal service to deliver ballots somehow changed in 2020? If you believe that, then we ought to eliminate absentee ballots or find a truly secure way of having these ballots returned to the auditor's offices, not just dumped in an unattended box. The left-leaning organization that gave Lincoln County private money to influence the elections is the same organization that encouraged the use of ballot boxes. Prior to 2020 elections, drop boxes were never used in Lincoln County, and I see no reason they should have been used then or in the future. Our election system seemed to work fine before private funding money was accepted by this commission, and I see no reason that we need to change our system because of the influence by an outside state partisan group. As a voter in Lincoln County, I hope I would have much more influence on this commission than the partisan group that provided the private money. Again, I ask to remove the possibility of election fraud or the appearance of election fraud by never accepting private funding for elections and removing any and all drop boxes from Lincoln County. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we'll move on to commissioner reports. Any commissioners have a report?
Madam Chair, thank you. I want to say happy birthday to my grandmother. She turns 100 years old today.
Wow.
Now, if you remember correctly, a couple of months ago, I said happy birthday to my grandfather, who turned 100. So I have two centenarians who are married to each other in my family. I can only hope my genes are as good as theirs. And so I want to say happy birthday to her. She's in the nursing home in Ellsworth, Minnesota, right now. Unfortunately, her and my grandfather can't live together anymore. He's still, he's 100 years old, and he still lives in his own house. So they're doing well, and I wanted to say happy birthday and best wishes to her. One other point of personal privilege I do want to say, you know, with regard to the world events and everything going on around us, certainly, there's a lot going on in the news, and we pray for the people in Ukraine and pray for a speedy resolution over there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have reports they'd like to make today?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes, I'd just like to add that last Tuesday on March 2nd, I did attend here at the Lincoln County Courthouse in the multipurpose room, the in-service put on by our sheriff's department shooter-in-the-building training, and I found it very rewarding. I found it very interesting. It definitely is something that I hadn't been through for a while, and our sheriff's department did a nice job, and there's officers presenting that information to our staff. And I think that, hopefully, that we'll never have to use it, but nonetheless, it does give us options in the event of these type of tragedies that seem to be happening, it seems like every month here and there and everywhere. So anyway, I'd like to commend those that attended that day, and I think there was also some the following day. So thanks again to the officers involved.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Gibbon. Any other commissioner reports today? If not, we'll move on to regular business. First item on the agenda is a public hearing.
This is a public hearing to consider an application to acquire medical marijuana license for Neville Patel of Shangri-La Law LLC to operate outside of a municipality on the property legally described as Albers, tract 1, northeast quarter, lot 7, except lots H2 and 3, 300-150, AKA parcel number 15030A017.
Good morning, Mr. Wall.
Good morning. The application was submitted to the auditor's office. The application is complete. We've completed the background check, and we would recommend adopting this and issuing the license.
Thank you. Is the applicant here? Good morning. Could you just state your name and address, please?
Good morning, TJ Cameron, 2821 East Daybreak Circle in Brandon, South Dakota. And I'm here representing Shangri-La as one of the minority partners.
Do you want to just tell us a little bit about what you plan on doing?
Absolutely. So my partner and I have partnered with Shangri-La. Shangri-La is an organization that is out of Missouri, and we were approached by actually multiple other applicants because we hold a property that was pretty desirable in Minnehaha County. That property ended up not winning the license, but we kind of did a vetting process of potential partners and landed on Neville and Kipple as our operating partners. They currently operate seven dispensaries in the state of Missouri. I was actually down there last week and had an opportunity to tour their facilities, and they are top-notch. I went into some of the other facilities in Missouri as well, because there's multiple other brands and operators down there, and there really was no comparison. The security plan, they have a double check-in vestibule where the patient comes in the front door, and IDs are checked, and the process for each state, which may vary here slightly, is taken care of in that secure area with no access or view of any of the cannabis area itself. And then upon check-in, there's a badge that's issued, and then they're able to enter. I also watched the inventory process, which is quite impressive. They were actually getting shipments while I was down there last week. And in each location, they have a general manager, a purchasing manager, a security manager, assistant manager, and then the staff. So there's plenty of eyes on the check-in process and checkout process and the entire transactional process for the patients. And I'm here to answer any questions that you'd like, I guess, in general, in this particular location, we'll build a new building. The old building is kind of a pole shed-style building. So I believe we submitted some preliminary plans, but we were working on the long-term and, you know, finalized plans based on approval here.
Thank you. Do any of the commissioners have any questions?
Madam Chair.
Sure.
I noticed in the application information, it states, has the applicant been through the state of South Dakota approval process? And you checked no. Don't we do that first?
I think it's, in South Dakota, we also have two other applications pending. One is in Brandon, and one is in Brookings. And it's, I guess, the chicken or the egg, because we have 90 days from the state's point of view, from time of approval from the governing body, in order to apply at the state level. So as soon as we issue approval here, we would submit that application immediately. We did it 24 hours later. As soon as we got the, I believe it's called a Schedule E or a Form E, as soon as we got that from Brandon, we actually filed with the state the very next day.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, this is our public hearing. If there's anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of the application, come on up. Anyone here that wishes to speak against the application, come on up. If not, any further discussion among the commissioners before I ask for a motion? I'll consider a motion.
Madam Chair, move to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Good luck. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. I know it's been a lot of work on all the municipalities and governing bodies and counties, so thanks for all the work you've done.
All right, and we've got, Terry has a bunch of items on the agenda. Hey, good morning, Terry.
Good morning. The first item I have here for you this morning is approval of our, approved and awarded bid for the 22 micro-surface project. We opened bids last Wednesday, March 2nd. We had three bidders, and I'll read the bids off, starting with the low bid. So first bid we had was from Aztec for $996,350.49. The next bid we had was Missouri Petroleum Products with a bid of $1,052,608.39. And the next bidder we had was Asphalt Surfacing Company with a bid of $1,250,750.18. Engineer's recommendation is to award it to Aztec, the low bid.
So moved, Madam Chair, on the request from Aztec for their bid.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Question?
Go ahead.
Yes. Terry, with the oil prices and everything going up exponentially, are these a guaranteed bid? I mean, are they going to be able to deliver at that price, do you think?
Yeah, I believe so, yes, yes. So just, you know, comparing to last year's oil prices, we're about a dollar a gallon higher for the oil for this, too. Nice project, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Next item, Terry.
Next item I have is, again, last Wednesday, we had bid opening for the 22 bid bridge replacement project. We had, so this is looking to award and approve and award the bids for these. Again, we had three bidders this year. Again, just as a reminder, these are the two structures over by Lennox on County Road 103 on the west side of Lennox. So I'll begin with the low bid, which is Pram Construction. They had a bid of $1,098,334.48. Next was BX Civil and Construction with a bid of $1,121,911.70. And the third bidder was Swinging Construction Company with a bid of $1,340,199. Engineer's recommendation is to award to Pram Construction.
Heard the request. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Terry, was this part of a big grant?
It was not. So the one structure on this, it's going to be the 42010109. That is a structure that, so all the costs for construction on that are going to be shared costs with Lennox. We have an agreement that we signed off with City of Lennox on that structure. So they're picking up 20%, I believe, up to $120,000, $125,000, I believe.
And the county's on the hook for the rest?
Yes.
Any other discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Next item I have is approval to purchase off the Beadle County bid. Again, the packet is, it's a large packet of information. There's multiple items, many, several items that are bid on there. So it's part of the agenda packet. So I guess I'm looking for approval to purchase. And mainly, what we're going to be purchasing off of here is culverts and bridge products, planks, bridge planks, or flex beam for guard rail, so.
Heard the request. Is there a motion?
So moved, Madam Chair.
I'll second it.
We've got a motion by Schmidt, second by Poppins. Any further discussion? Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Next item I have is going to be a, it's going to be a temporary, approved and authorized chair to execute a temporary easement. This is going to be up at, near the Klondike Bridge. So a little background on this, Lyon County owns that structure, and they need to get underneath by one of the bent columns, and they need to do a bunch of filling around there, because pilings are getting exposed in the river. So this is going to be their project, but since it's Game Fish and Parks owns that property, I made contact with them. And then it's going to be a partnership between Lyon County and Lincoln County, because any cost that they incur from this project, Lincoln County is on the hook for 50% of the cost, so. So this is basically an agreement with Game Fish and Parks to use their parcel, use a parcel to gain access to get underneath the bridge, on the west side of the bridge, so.
All right, we've heard the request. Anybody have any questions? If not, I consider a motion.
I'll so moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Last item I have for you, some good news, not that the other ones weren't, but just to update status on the big grant that we applied for, the Lake Alvin Bridge 42148050. They met back at the end of February, and we were awarded a grant for this project in the amount of $865,000, $65,800. So that's 80% of the total cost of this project. So we're on schedule now to have this thing built next year, so in '23 is what our plan is, so.
What's the total cost?
It's going to be just over $1 million, 1.1 maybe, or something like that.
We got about $207,000.
Yeah, yep.
But critically important, though, isn't it?
Yeah, this is, it's a good grant. So, you know, last year, we applied for this, and we were a long ways out of the money, but we, I went ahead and had some bid-ready plans, shovel-ready plans done to apply. We'll get more points for the structure, and then we were well within the money this year to get a grant, so.
How long will this project take?
It should just take one year. I mean, it's just a construction season, so, because it's going to be, it's a six-barrel, 11 by 10, so 11 by 10 box culvert, six barrels. So it's going to be rather large.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Terry, which number, the 865, 800 is static, or the 80% is static when our numbers probably will change in the actual cost for next year?
The grant amount is going to be the amount that's going to be solid.
That's the fixed amount.
Yeah.
Okay, just needed to know.
Yeah, that's a valid point. You know, we had, we had some issues, eh, not really issues, just concerns about this year's bridge projects that were bid, about the availability of rebar, being able to get rebar, you know, in a timely manner, so. So this structure here, hopefully, we'll be bidding possibly as early as this fall, so we can get prices locked in for a contractor, so.
And you don't have the funding agreement yet, so you're not asking for action today?
No, 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 there's no action on this. Like I said, I just thought I'd give you an update. It's, you know, this is a pretty good-sized grant, so, good news.
It is good news.
So, all right.
All right.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Terry.
All right, thanks.
Move on to item seven on our agenda. Commissioner Ehrens?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our last agenda item here for consideration today is a resolution regarding future land use for Spring Creek Golf Course. Spring Creek is in my district, and I've been out there quite a lot, thanks to the Rosties. They've invited me out there quite a bit, who are here today, Rich and Sue. Thank you for coming. And I've spent a lot of time out there on drainage issues, as well as some of these land use issues. And over the last couple of years, Game Fish and Parks has identified the Spring Creek Golf Course as a property that it wanted to use to convert into a different use other than the golf course. What they were planning on doing is having some kind of mixed-use facility there, whether it was daytime camping or something similar to what Good Earth is, where there's walking trails. But a few years ago, a donation was made to the South Dakota Game Fish and Parks Foundation before talking to the residents out there. And the Game Fish and Parks Department took a pretty hefty multimillion-dollar donation, the foundation did, with the intention of wanting to turn the golf course into a full-use campground. And like I said, they did that before talking to the citizens and residents who have been out there before. And so the Game Fish and Parks Department recently held a public comment period on what to do with the golf course. And just so people know, the golf course is no longer owned by the original founding members of it. It's now owned by the Game Fish and Parks Foundation, which is a nonprofit corporation that typically will buy land and then transfer it over to the Game Fish and Parks Department of state government. And many of the people on the Game Fish and Parks Foundation are also members of leadership within Game Fish and Parks who work for the state of South Dakota. So those two kind of work hand-in-glove with each other to do these property transfers. And they do this around the state, and for the most part, it's a system that works, and it works really well. And it works really well when you take in the input and consideration of those who will be most affected by it. And unfortunately here, this just happens to be a situation where the 100, approximately 160 residents, or excuse me, homeowners, there's more than 160 residents out there, would be affected by this transfer. They'd be affected dramatically by turning the property, what it is now, from a golf course, into a full-on campground. This is a campground where as many as 500 people a day could be there doing camping. You dramatically increase the traffic, as well as, obviously, the number of people. There would be increased need for county services out there, especially with regard to the traffic and road issues. And then you'd also have increased services out there for law enforcement, as well as emergency medical services. And so GF&amp;P held their comment period, and during the comment period, I don't think there was one single person in public who showed up to say they would support a campground out there. Excuse me. And I think the public comment was unanimous in the fact that the neighbors out there, most affected by this, were not supportive of a campground. And so now we've got a situation here where we, as a county commission, have an opportunity to lend our voice to all the other voices that have weighed in on this right now, asking for Game Fish and Parks to either turn this into some kind of daytime-use-only facility or to have the Game Fish and Parks Foundation maintain this as a golf course, or maybe they would sell it to a private contractor. You know, the biggest investment that people will make in their life is their home. And when these folks built their homes out there in Spring Creek around the golf course, they thought they were investing in a lifestyle and a way of life. This commission has been asked in the past to weigh in on many land use issues. And sometimes we do it with great success, and other times, it's a failure. And we need to learn from some of the failures or mistakes that we've made in the past, and now is an opportunity to do that. I foresee an issue here where campground is completely inconsistent with the land use that we have going out there. These people did not build their homes out there just to have a campground put in their backyard. And so because of that, what I'm asking the commission to do today is to approve a resolution. It's a non-binding resolution, but it's a powerful statement that the commission can make, showing leadership at our state level and Game Fish and Parks, as well as the public, that not only are we listening to our community, we're acting on the community's concerns, and that also we're standing up and taking a leadership position on land use planning issues as well. I have had excellent conversations with officials from Game Fish and Parks, and everything you just heard me say just now is what I communicated to them. And they were very polite discussions, they were very professional discussions, they were wide-ranging, and they were very candid. And so I want to thank the folks from Game Fish and Parks for sitting down with myself and Toby Brown from Planning and Zoning. We had a great discussion. And one of the things that we talked about in there is that if this doesn't, if the campground doesn't move forward, is that we pledged to work with Game Fish and Parks to find other recreational opportunities for people in Lincoln County. I mean, it's clear that there is a demand for people wanting to go camping and have campsites. But the issue isn't the demand, the issue is where should we place that? And there's a lot of land in Lincoln County that could be used as a campground by the state of South Dakota. And so Toby and myself pledged to work very constructively and diligently with Game Fish and Parks to help make that happen. In fact, Toby even said, could we get some money from the state to do a comprehensive plan for recreational opportunities? And while they didn't promise the money, they certainly did say that's a possibility, and they did encourage him to make such a request. So I think it shows that, it shows that we want to move forward constructively and find other recreational opportunities for people here in the county. We just want to make sure that those are correctly and smartly placed. With regard to some concerns about the resolution itself, I worked very closely with Bill Golden here over the past week regarding any concerns there may have been about conflicts and committing the commission to any language that could result in conflicts if a private entity, not the state, but if the foundation came in front of us seeking permits or platting or things like that. And we were able to work those things out, and I believe now we have a resolution that it's been lawyered up, and I believe it's consistent not only with the views and beliefs of the committee, but it's also consistent with looking out for the commission and making sure that the commission doesn't compromise any future proceedings that may come in front of it. So today, I'm going to be, or right now, I will make a motion to approve the revised resolution that is placed in your packet. Thank you.
There has been a motion made. Is there a second?
I'll second it, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, you've answered several questions, concerns that I have. One is that you have apparently worked this requested resolution, so that Lincoln County is just voiding its support for the landowners, and it doesn't have any extenuating situations that would obligate us beyond that. The other question that I have, Commissioner, is last week you and I talked, that I had talked with somebody from Game Fish and Parks about negotiations. Now, you and Toby have had that. Was that current? Now, you're, and Toby have had that. Was that current? Was that within the last ten days or two weeks or anything like that?
I would say that that discussion took place about a month ago.
Okay. Because I would agree with you in listening to some of the people from Game Fish and Parks, um, that they recognized, and I'll just share our conversation, that the golf course at that time, uh, when they were granted or purchased or whatever, wasn't in big demand, but now all of a sudden golf is pretty popular and, you know, you can't get tee times and you can't get other things. And that they had some, uh, willingness to negotiate to extend, uh, without doing anything other than maintaining the golf course, uh, for an extended period of time. So it's encouraging to hear that, one, uh, they will, as you have said, uh, entertain alternative ideas for that particular land. But what was encouraging to me, um, personally, was that there was enough latitude that they might leave it as a golf course for another three, four, or five years. And I don't know. I can't say, I don't know if any of the landowners or anybody has had communication with them. But that's what I took away with that, and I think I shared that with you, Commissioner, last week. So, um, I, I would hope, I would hope that a dialogue can be continued between the landowners and, uh, Game Fish and Parks so that there is, um, not a breakdown in communication. Because there sounds like there is a workable, uh, relationship that can negotiate something that can be mutually satisfaction to both, both entities.
Well, and Commissioner Schmidt, I, just to answer one of your other questions as well, went from our discussion. You had mentioned, uh, uh, talking about Blood Run and kind of the rich cultural history that exists out there with the Native American, uh, population as well. I, I do want to let you know, I have consulted with, uh, those folks. And, uh, Dr. Dennis Hastings from the Omaha Tribal Historical Research Project, uh, submitted a letter in support of this, uh, in support of the neighbors' concerns. Um, he was coming at it from the point of view of Native Amer- Native American, uh, restoration of the lands and wanting to preserve what's there and, uh, making sure that there wasn't any further disturbance of that, uh, larger Blood Run area. And I think they also submitted a letter on it. I don't know it, and they may have just submitted it this morning. But I do want to just state here for the record that, uh, the tribal community has weighed in on these issues, including the historical experts, and they are supportive of, of this undertaking today here.
That's encouraging. The only thing I would say, it is, uh, Blood Run was the popular one, but it's called for the state park, it's now Good Earth. That was renamed, so it'd be out there, just for, for the record. But I think that, uh, thank you for contacting them because I know that's pretty important to the Native American population to try to maintain as much of that historic area as you can. Because if any of you have ever studied any of that, this was a major area. They had almost up to thirty thousand people that resided in that particular area in South Dakota and, and in Iowa. It was a major trading thing of the Indians. So consequently, uh, to the Native American population, this is extremely important. And if you've ever been out there, go out there, you can see the mounds, the burial grounds, what's left. Many of them have been destroyed over time, unfortunately. But, uh, one of the major considerations to get this particular area into a state park has tremendous appeal and it continues to grow all the time. So, I'll shut up now, Madam Chair, and we'll probably call the question.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, just a couple of quick comments.
Go ahead.
I'm trying to ascertain as to the unwillingness, Commissioner Aaron's, that, uh, the state has in negotiating or communicating with the landowners. As they've not been here and not represented, uh, I would have appreciated that. I would also, I'll just continue with a couple of questions. You can pick which ones you would like to comment on. Uh, given this is somewhat of a planning and zoning issue and we have a, a commission that handles that, I would like us to run it up the flagpole with them and have them look at it in two factors. Obviously, if it's a state project, it's out of our jurisdiction, but if it was a private entity, uh, requesting such a move, would it, would it meet our muster as, meeting our requirements? Um, I would appreciate that before I would, would vote on this, uh, just to have an, uh, opinion from that board. Um, and again, the resolution doesn't hold us to anything. It uses words like request, so I'm not in opposition by any means of, of stating to the state that we would like the landowners in that area to be recognized and having concerns, which is what this says, so. But I would like us to send it to the P and Z, uh, commission and have them give their opinion on, uh, the merits of it, so.
Yeah, Commissioner Poppins, I did invite Game Fish and Parks to make a presentation and they politely declined. And I understand the reasons why. It's because they want to take input and feedback as opposed to be the main driver of the discussion. And so I completely understand why they wouldn't want to make a presentation. And they did hold open houses, two, two, at least two different open houses for people to attend in person. And they, uh, extended the feedback and comment period as well. So, um, they view themselves as more a collector of information as opposed to a disseminator. So I guess that kind of answers that question. Um, with regard to the state, ultimately, the state will have jur- uh, jurisdiction of the land out there. So under South Dakota law, a county has no planning and zoning authorities, uh, over a piece of property when it belongs to the state. I mean, for example, if that property got transferred to the state of South Dakota and they wanted to build a cement plant out there, they could if they wanted to. Uh, I'm not saying that's what they're thinking, but I'm just using that as, uh, to illustrate the nature of the authority that the state has. Uh, with regard to running this through Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, this is a, and I fully understand that. But, um, I think I did talk to Toby about that issue. He wasn't sure if, uh, planning and zoning considers resolutions or not. So since there is no pending action and since we are elected and accountable to the people, uh, as opposed to Planning and Zoning Commission, which is just individually appointed persons, uh, it just made better sense to come here to the commission so that, uh, the public knew, had a sense of where the commission is on these issues.
Thank you for that. Um, as far as I'm concerned right now, I cannot support this resolution today just simply because of some of the language and because, uh, the plans for the area are still in development and aren't available, according to the information that I have for this agenda item. So I think it's premature until those plans are fuller, more fully developed to, uh, take a stand one way or the other on this resolution. And I guess some of the verbiage is a little bit concerning to me as far as the GFP abandoning plans to include activities that extend beyond daytime use at the golf course. I mean, that golf course is currently used at night for lots of different events, uh, weddings, birthdays, other fundraisers and other events. And this seems to, uh, contradict what even the current use is. Um, so I will not be supporting this resolution as written today.
Madam Chair, would you entertain a, a, uh, tabling this until those kind of issues could be ironed out to your satisfaction?
Um, I, I would, I would certainly entertain that. There is a motion and a second on the floor. So if that motion's going to stay on the floor, I think we should just go ahead and vote on it. Um, and if there's any further discussion, I'd certainly entertain that.
Well, the reason I ask that is, um, I, I, you look at this and it's not necessarily that county is, is advocating its, uh, its advice or its counsel on what it is that the, the residents want. But I do think it's, it's imperative that a dialogue continue with them, mainly with the homeowners themselves, and see what they could come up with. And maybe, uh, by waiting a week or two weeks or three weeks, whatever it would take, to get that kind of, um, uh, meeting or arrangement set and working on the language that could be, uh, to your satisfaction or to clear up, that we wouldn't hurt anybody. Because there's nothing, no rush here. I don't, I, as I don't see it. So I would favor tabling this thing myself until such time and these things can be done. But we have a motion on the floor.
We do. Uh, any further discussion on the pending motion?
No, and the reason is that I don't like, I would wish they would withdraw it because I don't want to have to turn this thing down because I don't, am not in favor of turning it totally down. I'm just not in favor of voting for it as is at this time.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Go ahead, Commissioner Poppins.
Um, again, it's language. We're talking about requests. We're talking about, unfortunately, a document that doesn't carry a lot of weight. And I would, us, I guess, as a commission, be instrumental in, in one-on-one or group discussions with them more than just throwing a document out that really carries no weight. We are very sympathetic to change of use of, of property. The golf course has been there for many, many years. Um, yeah, this is pretty new. I knew that they had purchased, the foundation had purchased the property. But I haven't, myself, haven't had a conversation with them that clearly indicates what they are or are not going to do or what may have been negotiated beforehand. I would like some of those questions to be answered before I could come out, go on the record to, to say a document and, and have supported a document that just doesn't carry a lot of weight, unfortunately. So I would prefer that we maybe table instead of vote no on it and revamp the, the language, um, that might be more appropriate.
We had a motion by Commissioner Aaron's, I believe, that the second was by Commissioner Gibbon. Um, any input on whether you want to withdraw the motion, uh, table this item?
Well, uh, I, I think we can, uh, we're here and now. Let's, let's, uh, let's have a discussion about what the concerns are. If, uh, somebody can, can help me out here articulate what the concerns are, I'm certainly willing, uh, to amend the language here. And, uh, it's difficult to me in private because that constitutes a quorum. So I think having the discussion out in the public is, uh, is valuable today. And so, uh, maybe if somebody could tell me what, uh, specify what their concerns are, we can take a look at amending that language here, moving it forward expeditiously. Because, uh, Game Fish and Parks has indicated to me that they may have no solution for months, if not years, on this. And, uh, I don't think it's leadership to sit back and wait for months or years on trying to express what our sentiment is regarding, uh, regarding a land use issue. So, um, those conversations, according to Game Fish and Parks, may never actually happen. Um, and so I think it's important to get this out there today. But, uh, like I told Bill Golden, um, when we were working on the resolution, um, I think it's important to take into concerns the other commissioners, but also to take a leadership position on the issue so that we can show the public where we're at on this. And, uh, so I guess I would ask, uh, if you tell me what language you're concerned about, uh, let's hash it out here. I'd be more than willing to amend it.
I think it's poor leadership to vote on something that is still in development, unavailable information, um, putting out a message there that others can use as a snippet for their cause when we don't even know what's going to happen with that property. So that is my main problem with this. It's premature in my view. I will not be supporting it today. Um, that's, that's that.
Well, if I may, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Commissioner Poppins.
And if my word of private would be, the opportunity of GFNP was not willing to come into the public to contact them so we could, individually could find out what is going on in their, in their collective, um, concepts. Um, because it hasn't been presented. I have not privilege to it. I would like to have more information. Uh, leadership is showing to the residents that we hear them. That's not a document. That's talking to them eye to eye and saying, hey, we understand that change of use needs to be considered. The unfortunate part with the state owning the property, state statute gives us no jurisdiction on it at all. So lying to them and saying that we're going to stand up with a document and, and stop something, that's not true. We need to be more proactive and go and talk to them, and that being the GFNP or whatever entity, and working with them, not, not creating a document that, that really carries no weight. Um, and it's not trying to be unsympathetic to anything. It isn't. The change of use, uh, is extreme cha- uh, impact to people that have been around the area for, for several years. And we, there's nobody on this commission that doesn't understand that. So everyone understands and works in their leadership role. It's just my leadership role isn't a document that carries no weight.
Thank you. Uh, we have a motion and a second on the table. Sean, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
No.
Commissioner Schmidt.
No.
Commissioner Landy.
No.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
You know, this is something that I didn't like to happen because now we're on record of, uh, not supporting something that everybody is probably quasi in favor of. If I was a resident out there, be very honest with you, I'd feel the same way. I mean, I, that's not the issue. To me, the issue was, have we right now, in this, on March, whatever, eighth it is, why the residents of Spring Creek cannot contact, uh, Game Fish and Parks and sit down with them in some kind of direct negotiations, not in a threatening situation where we have a resolution, but saying, what can you extend? Can you talk about extending this golf course for another three to five years? In that time, Commissioner Aaron's has also, and, and Toby have talked to them about a grant for studying this thing. So rather than butting heads and playing this, this power situation, talking, negotiations are the best possible way to get this thing done. Isn't this county supposed to that? Of course not. But the idea was, why can't we sit down and delay this thing until such time as all parties have vetted every opportunity they have? I think there's real opportunity out there to do that. But when you, when you put the, when you put the walls up and you start saying, we don't want this and they don't want that and you don't communicate, uh, nothing happens. So I would encourage the members of Spring Creek to contact that, uh, Game Fish and Parks, ask to sit down, ask to do that kind of stuff. In the meantime, if it means that the county needs to apply for a planning grant or the, our area, let that happen as well. There's opportunity out here. This isn't a yes or no situation.
Thank you for that, Commissioner. Is there anything else to come before the board today, uh, Mr. Golden? With that, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll offer that motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landy.
Yes. For adjourn.